Oh, they're there. Sorry. Ready to go.
Okay. All right. Let's call this meeting to order. Can we roll call, please?
Council President Corman.
Here.
Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Councilmember Van.
Here.
Councilmember Benedetti.
Here.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Here.
Councilmember McGurven.
Here.
Councilmember Prince.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Okay, thank you. First up, we have administrative report.
Good evening, everyone. Your administrative report. Starting Wednesday, March 3rd, the Renton School District will begin returning to in-class learning for their elementary-grade students. Please remember to be cautious and courteous as some of our younger community members are walking to school, and be patient as buses pick up along their routes. School Zone speed cameras will be operational in addition to extra police patrols around the schools to ensure a safe return for the students. Families and children are invited to visit Sunset Neighborhood Park from March 7th through the 28th for a self-guided pop-up story walk titled "Bees Bees." The book will be displayed page by page on poster boards next to the walking path to read while strolling through the park. Support for this project comes from the City of Renton and the Renton Municipal Arts Commission. For more information, please contact Community Services at 425-430-6600. Renton Municipal Court will launch Renton Municipal Community Court to bring a new approach to dealing with low-level offenders. Community courts work to keep individuals who commit the lowest-level crimes out of jail. The court uses a problem-solving approach based on rehabilitation and accountability to work towards a reduction in reoffending. Sentences will combine punitive measures with enrollment and pretrial diversion programs such as drug treatment or mental health counseling. Participants will have onsite access to services in weekly or biweekly court hearings. Judge Karen Murphy Richards will host a Renton Municipal Community Court informational forum via Zoom on Tuesday, March 2nd, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. Active participation is limited to the first 50 individuals to register. Forum will also stream on YouTube. Attendees can get questions and concerns answered, and court staff will explain how the community can get involved. Please visit rentonlaw.gov/communitycourt for more information. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at rentonlaw.gov/traffic. All projects are weather permitting, and unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open. And that is your administrative report.
Okay, thank you. Next, we will have, we will open up the remote audience comment period. There remains the strong intent of the city to have public comment regularly included on our agendas. Each speaker will be given five minutes to speak. You will be called upon by a city staff member. The staff member will call the speaker's name and unmute the appropriate microphone, which will automatically send a prompt to the speaker of "You've been unmuted." This is the speaker's cue that it's their turn to speak. Please begin your comments by stating your name, city of residence, the topic you are addressing. Speakers should be able to see a timer on the screen. Please finish your comments when you see the time is close to expiring. Okay, who do we have?
Mr. Mayor, I have no one signed up in advance to speak this evening. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address council? If you have signed into Zoom and would like to speak, please use your computer to raise your hand. If you've called in and would like to speak, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine.
Okay, we don't see any.
I see no hands, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Jason, do we have any correspondence?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next up is the consent agenda. There are four items on the consent agenda for council consideration.
Um, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President Corman.
At this time, I'd like to ask if any council members would like any of these four items removed for special consideration.
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, I'd like to, yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd like to pull item A.
Okay.
Okay, and, Mr. Mayor, with that, I move approval of the consent agenda minus item A. Second?
Okay, it's been moved by the Council President Corman, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the consent agenda be adopted minus item A. All in favor, signify by, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay. Okay, motion carries. Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'd like to make amendments to our council meeting from February 22nd, 2021. Under the new business section, there wasn't a full description. So I moved to amend the new section, new business section, by adding in, quote, "Council Member Van raised the question of the incident of, the race incident of February 13, 2021, and asked the City of its plan to address hate crimes in the city, and asked the other council member their take," and that's unquote. So I'd like to add that into the meeting minutes. Second?
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, it's been, okay, yes. Did somebody raise their hand?
I think Councilmember McGurven was pressing scans before.
Okay, Councilmember McGurven?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think what I might, I, I don't know that it'll still be the first time I've ever probably seen us amend at least that strict interpretation of how the clerk has recorded the minutes. I know usually we grant the clerk a lot of leeway to capture that. If I understand Councilmember Van's motion correctly, it's just to make sure that that specific sentiment was captured, the minute said that, that was not included. And I don't, I don't know if Councilmember Van would be open to giving the clerk a little bit of leeway, or if we would want to have it exactly as stated. But as long as that spirit was captured, I think was the intent of the motion as I heard it.
Yes, thank you, Council McGurven. Yes, I think the, how it's recorded here is that, you know, it's not a full big record of the meeting, so I would definitely want to include that, whether the city clerk went to paraphrase, but certainly the conversation was initiated, and I think we missed that section.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like, if I could?
Council, Councilmember Perez, do you mind?
Oh, go ahead. It's Councilmember Perez. Go.
No, no, in fact, I, I was gonna ask if Jason could explain to us, because I know that there are two ways to, to, to record the minutes, and I know that you can give a full explanation. What the minutes say is council condemned the recent, the recent racist incidents of someone using a racial slur against an Asian-American, and I thought that that was accurate, but if Jason can explain us better, I would appreciate it.
Well, I just had-
That's Jason.
I had two points. One is, the, the minutes are not, the minutes record the action council took, not the discussion councils had, generally. If the motion is approved and seconded, then of course I will add that in there, and the minutes will be approved as corrected. The other part, yeah, was just clarification on the motion that Ms. Van stated. I, I didn't catch the whole thing. So, if, so I'm happy to revise it and add that section, or add that, but I didn't catch the whole.
Yeah, okay. Councilmember Perez?
Thank you. I remember five years ago, I asked this question specifically to Jason about what is recorded and what is not recorded, and while the full discussion is not recorded. And he told me that specifically in the minutes what is recorded is a motion that taking an action, and it's just the action that is recorded. Is this specifically Jason has a name, this kind of minutes?
I'm sorry, I didn't-
The minutes that you record just the action, it has a name?
Oh, action minutes. It's called action minutes.
Action minutes.
Right.
Yeah, I remember that. I remember.
And so while that's correct, I do, I do want to say, though, that if a motion is made to amend and write something specific in there, I certainly will do that.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Any, any other?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I, I think I'd like to understand exactly what Councilmember Van feels is missing. I mean, what exactly is missing?
Yeah. Councilmember Van?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I think that, you know, the general approach of the council from last meeting, I understood clearly, and as well as our community, that we would address it at council retreat. But I think certainly what's missing here, captured, like Council McGurven mentioned, is the sentiment and the spirit in which that was brought to the discussion. And we did spend a good 10-plus minutes, right? And so I think that for me, I want to make sure that it's reflected in, in the record.
Can, can you clarify sentiment and intent for me?
I have a follow-up question.
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran?
You, I'm sorry. If Councilmember Van could clarify exactly what is captured?
Yeah, so what's missing here is the, the discussion of the, the comment that was made that started the conversation is what was the City's plan to address hate crimes?
Is that-
And I think we did not capture that in the main meeting minutes.
So, if I could, and I'm not trying to be confessional-
Thank you.
But if I could clarify, the last sentence says, "Council then determining, determined that the upcoming council retreat would be a good venue to deliberate and determine what action council would take on this issue." Is that, does that not, is that not capturing the intent?
Of the council. But I think what I'm getting at is the question that I raised last time regarding the city itself, the mayor, in delaying nine days to condemn hate crimes, and what was the, you know, the question that I had was, what was the, the plan that we have for the city, not necessarily the council side?
Okay, so I suppose that what I would need is for you to tell me exactly what you would like the minutes to read, and then if that's approved, I'll put that in there.
Okay.
Because I'm, I'm just not clear. So I apologize.
Councilmember Perez, you had a question or concern or comment?
Very quickly, because if not, Councilmember Prince is gonna have a heart attack. So I'm going to, the only thing that I would suggest, Jason, if we're gonna vote on this, is that before the modification, it's approved, council members, we will have the opportunity to see how accurate that, that statement will be. And I don't know how you do that.
Well, she would have to express that statement in a motion, which she did. And so I just would ask that she repeat the motion so that I can capture it clearly.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I'll, I'll read it again. I move to amend the new business section by adding, adding in, quote, "Councilmember Van raised the question in regarding to the race incident that happened on February 13, 2021, and asked the City of its plan to address hate crime within its jurisdiction, and to ask other council members their take," unquote.
Okay, do you have that, Jason?
Yeah, I will capture it. I'll get it from the recording. Yes, sir.
So it's been moved by Councilmember Van, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the amendment be made to the last week's minutes. All in favor, signify by-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President Corman?
I'm, I'm okay. In general, I, I don't, I don't know if I've ever, you know, disapproved of, of a correction to the minutes, and, and, and this is fine with me now. The, the only thing is, I, I do want to acknowledge Councilmember Perez's line of questioning, that if the, if the minutes typically catch action, I guess I would just say that if, if during the course of a, of a council meeting, if somebody wants an item specifically written into the minutes, it would be good form probably to just say that. Say, I'd like it recorded in the minutes that, that I am saying this, or something, because otherwise it does put the clerk in an awkward spot. It's, so, but, but I, you know, we're, we're learning. So I know we've had council members in the past that have really, I think back to Dick Stradicki, he would often ask for specific things to be recorded in the minutes, and that's kind of a proactive way to do it. But with that, I'm, I'm fine with this.
Okay. Yes, Councilmember Prince?
We, we're gonna do whatever we're gonna do here with this vote, but I think that we may be creating a bad precedent, and that's all I want to say.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran?
I would like to hear more from Mr. Prince on what bad precedent we may be creating.
Councilmember Prince, you care to elaborate?
I think, I'm happy to elaborate. I think if we go down this road and change whether really action minutes and start putting in, the minutes are for the public to see the actions that we take as a council. If people want to see the discussion, guess what? Videotape is there. I mean, I've seen council meetings from back when Kathy Coker was mayor. I mean, so the tape is there, if someone really wants to see it. But like I said, it's gonna be whatever it's gonna be with this vote. But I, I, in my heart, think we're setting a bad precedent, and I understand what Councilmember Van's saying. I don't agree, but I understand.
Okay, any other comment or concerns? Okay.
There's two hands raised, sir.
There is. Geez. Okay, Councilmember Van?
Did you raise your hand first, Councilmember McGurven? I wasn't sure. Your hand is kind of lighter. Yeah, no, I, you know, it's, for me, it's to capture the, the meeting itself, and I know you're saying the action meeting, but we didn't vote last time. It was a general kind of consensus within the, the council. If we're saying it's a bad precedent, we're not, we're setting a bad precedent for the future, then what Councilmember Corman said then is also, is that something that we don't do in the past, what we would proactively do? Because I'm getting different standards from everyone, and I think it's not the first time. So I just want to clarify. If I wanted to do something on the record next time versus having to go retroactive, which would, what would the council prefer to do?
May, may I?
Yes.
Please.
Generally, in the past, Councilmember Van, a council member or the mayor would say, "For the record." And to me, that's a trigger to put it in the minute.
Okay, Councilmember McGurven?
Yeah, sorry, I don't want to belabor this too much longer. I just wanted to concur with both the points that Councilmember Prince and Corman made in terms of, I, I think that this changes fine. I don't think we should make this a regular habit if we can help it, and if we can be proactive in the future. I think they'll make these things go smoother. I think the, the motion I'm fine with. It's, it's an accurate reflection of the events. It's not, I, I know if we do, as, as I understand Councilmember Prince's concern, this can be a way that you can basically start to try to, I, I think it can make things more uncomfortable if it moves beyond just making factual statements. And I've, I've caused a few more hands to go up. All right. Or maybe they were gonna do it anyway.
Yes.
But, 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 yeah, I don't, I, I, I think generally that if we don't get into this too much, I do agree, and then Councilmember Prince made the point I was thinking as well, that the tape is always there. So that, that does exist, and that's why I would say, let's make this the exception rather than the rule that we do this.
Mr. Mayor? Hold on, one sec. Councilmember Perez, hurry hand up first.
Yeah, I'm sorry, and I, I don't, I, I don't know how to, I don't raise my hand. I agree 100% with Councilmember Prince. So if, for any reason, we're gonna modify the, 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 the minutes today, which, which I agree with Councilmember Prince, this is a bad precedent, I would like to, also to record that the first two council members that addressed this issue were Councilmember McGurven and Councilmember Benedetti. And then, but I, I, I think, Jason, I truly appreciate your, your comment on, on that. In the future, we should say, "For the record," but I think we should not abuse that, "For the record," also it will be a very bad precedent, because this is an action minutes. If not, we change the kind of minutes that we're taking. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Prince.
I, I'm, I'm just gonna keep this a buck, and then this is all I can about this. If we do this now, what we're allowing future councils to do, future councils, is, it's a form, to create our, make our minutes be a form of grandstand. And that's not what we're here for. We're here to conduct the business of the city. And I think that if we do this, and we allow future councils to be able to grandstand through the minutes, then we, you know, why, why are we, you know, when do we actually get to conducting the business of the city?
Councilmember O'Halloran?
Yes, I just want to say that I'm not gonna be in a position to support this motion.
Okay. And Councilmember Van?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm just glad that my colleagues are able to say what is the standard so that it's on, on public, because then I've gotten several different standards throughout this whole process. So I appreciate it. I don't think I'm trying to delay business. I actually, in fact, would love us to add more business to the agenda. But certainly, I do appreciate colleagues and your, your comment.
Mr. Mayor-
Okay, any other conversation?
Mr. Mayor, before the vote, can I ask Ms. Perez to clarify, was she amending the motion by?
No, I'm not gonna be able to support as well this, this motion. So I, it'll make no sense for me to amend it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna call for the votes. All in favor of this minute, signify by saying aye.
The change in the minutes, aye.
Opposed? Nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, motion does not carry. Okay, next up, we are onto unfinished business. Council President Corman?
Um, no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Van?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Benedetti?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven?
No unfinished, no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Prince?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we have no-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I may just ask, I just wanted to get clarification. We, we voted down an amendment to the minutes. Did we need to also vote to approve the minutes?
Yes, that's correct, sir.
Yes, yes.
Good, good catch.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah. I move we approve item A of the consent agenda.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Corman, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the council adopt the minutes, item A from the consent agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries. And Councilmember Prince, did I, did I get you on unfinished business?
You did. I said no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We are on to new business. Council President Corman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. First, I have a meeting to announce. For March 8th, Monday, March 8th, we'll have committed the whole meeting at 6 o'clock p.m. It's via video conference. Two items on the agenda. The first is the introduction of the new Renton Fire Authority Fire Chief Steve Hyman. And second item is mobile vaccinations in coordination with the Recreation and Neighborhoods Division. And then one other item I, I wanted bringing up, I guess, I, I think this is an appropriate place, but it's a, it's a bittersweet evening in that this is the last meeting that our beloved Council liaison, Julia Metzegian, is going to be with us at, at a council meeting. Julia has, has really powered this city through for the last, she'd have to correct me, it's probably 23 years, 24 years. I am very proud that I helped hire her when we selected her, and obviously she was a good selection, so that was one of the better decisions that I had made. But you, you may know, I've told people before that she was, when she applied for the job, she had been a 911 operator, and I remember thinking, oh, that's perfect for, you know, working with all of us on city council before these meetings. I have to say that during the time that Julia's had that position, she's really grown what that position, what that position is from, you know, sort of a data secretary when, when she took over. I mean, we'd had some good people in there that had done some, some good work, but Julia really grew it into a, 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 really a meaningful, all-around staff person resource for the council. And so all of us on council share basically one dedicated staff person just for the council, and that's Julia, and she's managed to fulfill the, the needs of all of the council members, the, the seven of us here. She's worked with over 20 council members during the time she's had that, that role. And every one of us always feels like, like we're her, you know, only customer, that she's taking care of us, that she cares about us. And, and she's, we've never had an issue before us in council where Julia, you know, in addition to coordinating the materials that we need to have, she understands what the issue is. So she, she understands what we need, because she's actually, you know, latched on to what the actual issues are, and she understands how they fit into the bigger picture. So she's been a very valuable resource. The other thing that I have to mention is she, in changing the job, becoming more of a staff person for us, she also really applied technology to the role. I mean, that, that, say that was bound to happen. When, when I started, when she and I first worked together, it was, leave notebooks, and she'd put all the agenda items in, and, and had to, she always had a sea of notebooks in front of her as she was getting ready for the next council meeting. But she, she was really, she made us early adopters of switching to iPads and putting everything online, and it kept better records for, for, I mean, it, it allowed people at home to, to watch the meetings and read the agendas and everything else. So it modernized it not just for the council, but for people at home, and it saved the, the city a ton of money. She managed to really reduce the amount of paper and the amount of procedures that had to go into it. She's continued to be a expert with technology. So I, I want to actually give other council members a chance to, to, to address this, and we will have another event to, to see her off, but I just wanted to thank Julia before the whole city for the hard work she's done on behalf of the City of Renton and the council, and the, you know, everybody in the community.
Thank you, Randy. So I have to tell you that now, having served in two positions, two elected positions, her, her job in balancing between helping the administration and helping the council has been amazing. As a new council member, you come in and you, you, you really don't realize how much you don't know until a couple of months in. And it's, you know, the old adage, it's drinking from a fire hose. And she really had a way, or has a way, I guess, of, of helping you through that. And, and it's interesting as she transitions with, and I've watched her with the council members that have come behind me, she, she goes from being the person that knows more than you do, to then becoming your support person, and it's, it's a, it's not an easy kind of transfer. And, and the other part of it is, like I said, the ability and the way that she's been able to really help the city by bridging that gap between the administration and the council. It's, I, I can't tell you how valuable it is to me. And I've actually talked to, other mayors have actually called me about Julia's position when their councils were inquiring about wanting their own staff members. So, so anyway, I, I can't, we're gonna miss her. Judith's gonna do a fantastic job, but it's hard to replace somebody that's been here so long. So, yes. And I see we have some hands up. Councilmember- Yes, and I see we have some hands up, uh, Councilmember O'Halloran?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Julia, I, I just want to say, I cannot begin to imagine onboarding, not only during this year, which has just been unbelievable, but under any circumstances, I cannot imagine onboarding to this role without you, so. Namaste. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Perez, I think was next, I'm losing people. Oh, there you are, Councilmember Perez?
Thank you. I don't want to get emotional, but I may do. Julia was the, the, the first person that, that made me feel welcome in the City of Renton. She has worked with BIPOC councilmembers before, but never with a councilmember whose English was her second language. She never asked me to repeat myself, she never, uh, misunderstood what I say, she even, uh, before I finished my sentence, she, she was able to know what I wanted. She is that professional that she never made me feel that I didn't know what I was doing, that when she was guiding me, she did such a professional way that she always made me feel that my position was important, and that she was there as a support system, knowing, as you, you said, uh, uh, Mayor, that she knew way more than me how to do the job. Julia, I don't know how I could have ever been successful as a council member without you. The way you helped me, the way you support me in the good and the bad and the ugly, uh, is priceless, and, and you will always, always be in my heart, because this job is not easy, and you really helped me to become a better council member. Your commitment and love for Renton is something that I, I always gonna admire, and, and with that, I'm gonna let other councilmembers to stay there.
Thank you. Councilmember Prince?
You know, it's so funny, I, I, when I think of Julia as our council liaison, she's really the, the quiet amongst the storm of all the things that are going on, um, she's just that calm and steady presence. I don't know how many times, um, I've gotten a call from her, um, if I needed to sub for someone who was out sick for a committee, or, you know, her putting together the binders for stuff, or getting me registered for conferences. She's always done it like it was super easy, um, like it was no sweat, even though sometimes I know those binders had to be, you know, really difficult. And, and just top-notch professionalism. I will, I will miss you, Julia, um, I will miss being able to chat with you and laugh with you, um, but you have more than earned this retirement.
Well said.
Thank you, Councilmember McGurven?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think Councilmember Corbin said similar to what I was thinking in terms of the, the 911 operator, and, and I have a little bit of understanding and appreciation for this role, having been a former, uh, as I think others perhaps appear as well, former legislative staffer, and understand a little bit about working in the role, and, uh, really have appreciation for the work that you do, uh, being on the front lines and what that means. It's, in a lot of ways, a very, very thankless job, uh, to make measures even more challenging, of course, not only, um, are you the front lines in a lot of respects, um, you also have seven different bosses, which is different than working in Olympia in the legislature, where you only have one senator to, to report to, um, and so to be able to balance that and be here for so many years really is a testament to the good work that you've done. It is a political field, and, um, oftentimes, perhaps others may not have survived as long as they weren't able to, to navigate those challenging waters and different personalities, and you, you've done that so well in terms of balancing the needs of, uh, varying individuals, and I know they varied very much over the years, um, all the way up until now, and so finding a way to, to find that harmony, I think, is really a value that, um, that you've brought to this role, that, um, I, it certainly is something I appreciate. And I, for that matter, I would say on a more personal note, I, I always enjoyed, um, our casual conversations in between meetings not related to city business, and, uh, you were always someone I felt like I could talk to, which is great, so, which makes it all the sadder that we're not here to send you off in person for your last meeting, so. But again, going back to the technology, you know, I, I pride myself as being someone who's like, I, I don't want to be someone who needs a lot of support, and then I find oftentimes, I'm like, okay, Julia, I, I know you can just do it, so, um, I, I was like, no, 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 I can take care of myself, I can take care of myself, I'm, I'm, I'm a big boy, but, um, it's, it's, I really appreciated all the work you put in over here, so thank you.
Okay, um, Councilmember Van?
I think Councilmember Benedetti has in front of me.
Okay, Councilmember Benedetti, you guys keep moving around on my screen, I don't know who's first. So Councilmember Benedetti?
That's okay, I thought we were going in seniority order. Well, um, Julia, I just have to say, as the new girl, um, the thing that you never made me feel was new. I, I would never have been able to get through the first year, especially in this environment, without your absolutely undaunted support, and, um, the way that you are able to smoothly navigate all sorts of political waters is something that I think every one of us admires so very much. I will miss your laugh, and I hope that I have an opportunity at some future just to, to call you to hear it. So, um, thank you so much for everything that you've done for this city that I know that you love, and I know that the, the thing that you always have been able to do is to make this body look good. Our council is, is what it is because of the work that you do. Thank you.
Councilmember Van?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Julia, uh, thank you so much, you know, you, you think that I'm probably what, the youngest on this council, maybe, maybe Council McGurven? We're about to say age, but man, I depend on you for technology, and I can, I, I am just so thankful that you have helped us, um, our council through this process, especially during COVID-19 and pivoting, um, the institutional knowledge that you have, and just seeing that everything can fit into the puzzle, right, uh, just the broader picture. So really, that harmony, that harmony, uh, that you bring to the council, so very much appreciated, and then you're always welcome back to council in a different role, of course, but, but certainly always welcome back to City Hall, so thank you so much, and enjoy your retirement.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I, I couldn't, I couldn't pass up an opportunity, I've been working with Julia for 16 years, uh, she and I have been through a lot together, uh, made it through a lot, I'm just so pleased and so happy for her that she's, uh, able to retire, uh, you know, I really, uh, I couldn't do my job without her, you know, there's a lot of things that go on behind the scenes that, to make these agendas happen, to make this council meeting, especially this last year with, uh, COVID and, and transitioning to the virtual meetings, it would have been almost impossible for me, uh, to do this without her help, so I really appreciate it, and, uh, thank you, Julia, and, uh, I wish you the best.
Julia, did you want to say anything before we, uh, move on?
Yes, thank you very much, everybody, it's, it's been a dream job for me, being able to help the city that I lived in, that I raised my family in, and help everybody to achieve the goals that they come on to council to achieve, to show them the way to make these things happen, it's just, it's been wonderful, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, and I think I lost my spot, oh, here we go. Um, we are still on new business, and I'm, uh, Council, uh, Councilmember Perez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no new business.
Okay, Councilmember Van?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Benedetti?
Have no new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Monday, March the 8th, at 4:15 in the afternoon, the Finance Committee will be meeting via video conference. Via video conference, we have three, uh, agenda items, one is Heather Down's grant agreement, second being vouchers, and third is emerging issues in finance, and that is all, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McGurven?
Uh, no new business, Mr. Mayor, sorry, I could not find the meet button.
No worries. Uh, Councilmember Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on, uh, Monday, March, uh, March 8th, um, 2021, at 5:00 PM, via video conference, the Planning Development Committee will meet, we have four items on the agenda, Docket 15, Housing Action Plan Update, Emerging Issues in CED, and, um, Updates Amendments to the Countywide Planning Policies, that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And, and Jason, did we announce the council retreat?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President Corbin?
Yeah, I, I will go ahead and announce that, I, I think that normally, we might announce it closer to the event, but it, but just to bring everybody's attention to the fact that we did come up with a, uh, a, a date, um, so I'll go ahead and announce that, uh, Saturday, March 20th, uh, we will be holding our council retreat via video conference, um, uh, and it will be 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't announce that before, I was trying to remember why it's showing up now, I think typically I would announce that in the meeting before that retreat, but this, this will make sure we're covered.
Yep, we'll probably announce it a couple more times.
Yeah, exactly.
What's the wish of the council?
Move me adjourned.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember Corbin, that we adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, we are adjourned, have a great week, everyone.
Thank you.